All set? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order Tuesday, March the 9th. Welcome again. It's nice to see so many people in the room. There's a lot of smiles, a lot of optimism, and certainly welcome to the ones at home. Maybe a good thing you're there because we're running out of room in here, but it's nice. A little late just because we've been visiting. First thing I'd like to do is, it's somber, but I want to pay tribute to a former warden. Today, we remember Matthew Schaefer passed away on March the 1st. Matt was elected Warden of the County of Elgin in 1976 at the age of 34, making him one of the youngest to ever serve as Warden. You know, 1976, I was married in 1975, and it was a different world then. Our first TV was a black and white TV and things like microwaves. Cell phones weren't even invented, so it was a different world at the county at that time. Matt served on Elton County Council as Reeve and Deputy Reeve of the Township of Bam from 1973 to 1976. He served many community organizations in Bam over the years, always proud to attend the Warden's annual banquet and other county events. I think that's the last time I saw Matt was at your banquet, Duncan, two years ago. On behalf of Elgin County Council, I express my condolences to Matthew's family and to the municipality of Bam. His service will not be forgotten. We will now observe a moment of silence in his honor, so please rise if you're able. Thank you. Mr. Warden, if I may, through you to councilors and to staff of the County of Elgin. On behalf of the family, I'd like to thank you for the tribute applied to Uncle Matt. And all the thoughts are well appreciated. The flowers that were sent were very much appreciated. And so, again, just on behalf of the family, thank you very much. You're very welcome. He was a good man. Keep it simple. He was a good man. We have a couple of people to introduce today, new employees, Jeff and Ray Brock. Jeff, welcome. Some of us have already met you. Please, if you'd like to, I did warn him earlier to keep his speech short, but Jeff, tell us a bit about yourself. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, members of council. I'm happy to be here, part of Elgin, part of the team. I come from an emergency management background and a fire background, so I've been talking with many of the member municipalities so far about some of the emergency planning needs and spoken to a large number of the fire chiefs about being able to move some of the fire training forward in a more unified manner and being able to put some services in Elgin County that will serve all of the municipalities in a positive way. Happy to be here, happy to be part of the team.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate those comments. And we have Christine. Christine's our new administrator down at Terrace Lodge, and I just met her a couple minutes ago, but Christine, welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Christine Leonard, and I come from the Niagara area. I've been working in seniors' care for 40 years, and I just thought I would move this way. My daughter is son-in-law and two grandchildren live in St. Thomas, and so it was an opportunity for me to be closer to my grandchildren as well. So I'm happy to join Michelle and to work together for Terrace Lodge at such an exciting time.
On behalf of council, welcome, and moving closer to grandkids is pretty good medicine, so. See all the best, both of you. All right, we have some, I guess, disclosure, pecuniary interest. Do I see any? Better check the screen here. Okay, there's none. Adoption of minutes, I just forgot that. So everyone read the minutes? If there's no errors or admissions, I'd entertain a motion to receive them. Moved by councillor Mennel, second by McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And we do have a delegation this morning, Shirley Sherman, long-term care homes. Does she join us? There's, I see it on the... Shirley, if you're here, you have the floor. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I'm here, but it says that access to camera not allowed. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. All right, and I appreciate you giving me a few minutes. I'm Shirley Sherman. I live in New York. 12 years ago, I retired from long-term care. I was a charge nurse, a registered nurse, at a private sector long-term care home in St. Thomas. The last three years, I worked part-time. And having seen an article in the Elgin Express read the possibility of council divesting of some assets that are long-term care homes, I determined I had to speak up. And I read the Strategy Corps report. It seems most of the difficulties of retention of your homes are within that report. I understand you have not followed all these recommendations, and I'm here to build you to never divest of your assets. As I read it, "The purpose of the Service/Municipal Board for Long-Term Care Administration would be to get the financials trimmed to such an extent that the homes would be attractive to a private sector buyer." I understand we're talking of two of the three homes. And I had to notice so much money to be spent with no patient care needs would be spent without funding. Also, "No longer the need for the board, the directors and the staff, nor the corporation forum for the savings would result." However, page 23, left column, does finally admit for the first time that the facility's service levels would be affected as previous references claim to maintain quality levels of care. The report encourages council to seek partnering with a private sector long-term care company for expertise in reducing per-bed costs and gave an example of a seeming successful model. I beg you never to enter into this kind of partnership. "The last year has been devastating to residents and families of long-term care, as you all know, and we are thankful that Elgin County, concurrent living places, have not been severely adversely affected with deaths and cases. However, recently, there was a tragedy in Oxford. Throughout the year, I have followed the unconscionable statistics, the suffering and grief of residents and their families, and observed the parts of the sector worst affected, the private sector of long-term care. The virus has revealed the deficiencies of staffing policy, which has been known to each relevant provincial government department for a very long time, years and years of effort to insist on reform have gone unanswered, unacknowledged. Regulation standards required by inspections required by various government departments were not enforced, fell off, and findings of inspections that were carried out were not rectified. If existing regulations of the Ministry of Health, of Labor, and various Department of Health, et cetera, had been followed, this history would not be..." I can provide statistics to back up the above statements. Therefore, I beg you not to be in partnership with any for-profit companies. If you ever consider this, take time to research the company, determine the track record of resident care, of working conditions for the staff. You will be shocked with your findings. Perhaps you already have and are. I was saddened when, just prior to the pandemic declaration, the current government announced cuts to long-term care funding. I saw what it would cost Elgin County, and that was so unfair. Your homes have an excellent reputation as the community, and to maintain that, you would have to provide more funds, so he doesn't, nothing to deserve the burden, and have done so much to provide for and ensure that the homes are to be proud of. "I see long-term care as existing with bare bones, bare bones, no fat to trim," as I heard the premier say there was. "The reports of long-term care difficulties recalls memory that I and the staff of all categories dealt with daily. Steadily, over the years, the acuity and complexity of the health of the residents increased with no adjustment of staffing ratios, despite adhering to ministry requirements of charting for dollars. Eve, over the years, as I've met staff, I worked within the community, they told me how it was so much worse than when I went there, giving me a look that said I could not imagine. When there were flu outbreaks, we were never afraid to come to work. We knew we'd get the flu, we knew we'd get better, and we'd come back to work. But of course, now I have been so worried for staff, as this virus can be anomalous with extended and/or lifelong consequences. Thank you for your time, and I wish you well with managing the budget, and I'm available for any questions if you wish." Sorry about the video. Don't allow me on.
Okay, Shirley, thank you for the presentation. I'll open the floor for any councillors who have questions. Councillor Mennel, go ahead.
Just a comment, Mr. Warden. Surely, your concerns are also the concerns of this county council. The provincial average, I believe, is about two and a half hours for residents. And we, and they, I think the province since COVID hit has wants to move that up to four hours. We are very close to that four hours in Elgin and with our homes, and that's why we're subsidizing the province by the $2 billion, $5 million.
Yes.
I talked to Jeff Yurik, and certainly he indicated that the province is willing to bring the level of care up over a period of years, and certainly that would change the equation in looking down the road. So once we see that level of care go up, and there's their revenues to the homes increase, that may change that picture. So I'm not in favor of making a decision until we see that.
Further comments?
Yes, at one time, 2.5 would have been just ideal, and over the, you know, so the demand has increased, especially with the extra precautions needed with COVID. And the, I am a member, I should have said, of the Antera Health Coalition since its inception, and it advocates for improvements in our publicly funded healthcare system, all four sectors. And right now, we are campaigning for four hours per day, because, as you know, the private sector does not give that, and it takes a lot of funding, as you do, to provide that four hours. And that is the minimum that's needed right now. And I appreciate that. I, since I became interested in this, I tuned into your livestream sometimes, and I became aware that you are proud of your homes and want to maintain that pride. And I come to before you to encourage you. I appreciate that, and I'm so encouraged by it, and I just wanted to let you know that other people appreciate your efforts.
Well, Shirley, thank you on behalf of council for your comments and the visit today.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is moving into Committee of the Whole. Entertain the most. Yes, yes, better. A motion to receive the presentation moved by Jones and Ketchba. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Moving into the Committee of the Whole, and I believe I had French and Purcell with their hands up. Go ahead with the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One, two reports. I think the first one is mine. I don't know if there's any questions there. At times, was very busy during the month, but we'll comment on the 4H one on the Saturday. A few weeks back was actually a very, because being a warden, some days you get to do some fun things, and that was a fun one for me, and, you know, I would say how many years ago when I was in 4H, but when your original leader is still there, Henry Helder, and the first voice, person you see on the Zoom meeting, it was pretty amazing, but so that was a fun day. But I don't know if there's any questions about the report. I'd be happy to try and answer them, but not seeing any. Look for a motion to receive. Mennel and Mennel and Jones. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on. Is our next one is score appointments. Any comments on that or reports there?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by McPhail, a second or please. Jagger, please, and thank you. Go ahead with the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
I don't have any problem with the candidates. I do have a problem with stores, so I'm going to say no.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
8-1, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next report is Director Homes and Senior Services. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through members of council. So before you is our report on the Homes Dietary Policy Manual Review and Revisions. And so the departmental policy and procedural manuals are to be reviewed annually. The Homes Policy Manual for the Dietary Department was reviewed and revised by the Managers of Support Services for our three, from our three homes, as well as in consultation with a registered dietitian. And all of those changes are noted before you in the report, and the revisions align with the Long-Term Care Home Act and regulations. So the two recommendations before you today are that the report be received and filed, and that council approve the manual review and revisions for 2020 for the dietary policy. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Michelle? Not seeing anyone, seeing any questions. Can we do that with one vote, both recommendations? Okay, mover and a second or please. By Mennel, second by Ketchba. Headbeat you, but I'll keep you in mind for next one, Sally. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jagger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Terrace Lodge redevelopment. Some excitement down there.
Yes, this is when I get really excited about coming to council. So Carolyn has a presentation she's pulling up, so thanks, Carolyn. So we decided we needed to do, develop a presentation that could be utilized for frontline staff, for residents, for families, for council, for the general public, to just keep them informed about where our project is at currently and how it's moving forward. So the first slide you see before you shows the, coming in from the highway, so it's the front circle. The very light gray rooftops that you see are our current resident home areas, and then the dark gray rooftops that you see are the U-shaped additions. So construction begins February 2021. Yes, it did. The last week of February, we were breaking ground. Next slide, Carolyn. So just a review of our building design goals. So we really focused on creating that inviting, functional 100-bed home for our community, and a home that's going to last for many, many years to come, and to focus on enhancing the resident, staff, volunteer, and community experience, and not only meet, but exceed the ministry design standards. We looked at enhancing privacy and improving infection prevention and control, and truly providing those welcoming spaces for socialization and activities, upgrading service spaces for customer service, staff safety, and efficiency. So focusing on some renovations to the chapel, the main kitchen, shipping and receiving, reception, and really that good goal of building on time and on budget. So that's our focus right now. And just a bit of looking back, the planning stages, MMMC, our architects worked extensively with our stakeholders. So we had public consultation meetings where everyone was invited in to give their input on what they valued and what they envisioned for our redeveloped home. Our steering committee chaired by councillor Bob Purcell provides the oversight for our project, and within that, we have a working committee that informs the project design and project decisions. And so important, we were able to incorporate the COVID-19 learnings into the design, and fundraising campaign was launched in December in the middle of a snowstorm, but we got it going. And so February 21, as I said, construction began on phase one. Next slide. So the summary, "We're staying with our 100 beds, and we're staying with our four resident home areas, including our one memory care home area, but that new addition is really focusing on significant expansion, a new home area space for the residents, and then renovations with full renovations to all the existing home areas, the main kitchen, shipping and receiving, and then partial renovations to the basement and main floor core areas." So again, we have three construction phases, and we'll speak a little bit about those. If we look at the resident home areas, so this is the first floor, north and south. On the top of the screen is your north wing, and so it's the whole top and then the L shape leading down to the south. The south is that full bottom of that screen. So again, 20 bedrooms in each resident home area, and something we haven't had to date, but we're having dining rooms on each resident home area, but not one, but two dining rooms in every resident home area, and having an attached surgery and a home kitchen. And the activity lounge and program spaces are just so inviting and something that we're not used to in the resident home areas. And not only are we having a tub room, but also a shower room, where we're accustomed right now to having a tub and shower room all together in the same space, and staff and service spaces within the resident home spaces, which is new as well. So let's have a look at the resident rooms. So our current state, to just remind council, we have 80 residents currently sharing one room, two residents to one room, and four residents to one bathroom. So a big change coming down the road for this project. 84 residents will have their own single bedroom, which is the photo on the left, with a private en suite washroom, and only 16 residents will have a single bedroom with a shared en suite washroom. But each of those two rooms, which is unique to Terrace Lodge, because at Volby or Villa, the double rooms is one entrance. These residents will have their own separate entrance and only a shared washroom. So an extra enhancement to the Terrace Lodge project. Next slide. So this is a good look at the dining spaces. So again, two inviting dining rooms with the surgery and the home kitchen attached. And so we're dining right in those resident home areas, that significantly reducing the wait times for portering, providing a pleasant dining experience and easy access to all dining tables. No more moving people in and out, interrupting their meals and moving them away from the table. So late, late derivers or early folks leaving the table early don't have to be interrupted. And the ability for future, for physical distancing during outbreaks. So if we have an enteric outbreak after we're done pandemic, if we have an enteric outbreak or if we have an influenza outbreak, we'll still be able to bring people to the dining room because of what we've done here, and so we're pretty excited about that piece. And the next slide. So this is one of my favorite pictures here. Look at those spacious and secure courtyard spaces, that large accessible area, views of the courtyard from all of the resident bedrooms, walking paths, gardens, sitting areas, and raised planters, areas for activities, events, and gatherings. That's just so inviting when I look at that space. So an overview of the core areas. On the right-hand side is the first floor core areas. So full renovation of the main kitchen, that's that brown space on the top right-hand photo. And a new addition to kitchen and receiving areas, the gray space beside it, and right in front of that gray space is a new second elevator. And I can't tell you how many times I've been asked, "When you do the project, is there going to be a second elevator?" Because we really need to have that to rely upon. So we're so excited. And actually, Christine, one of her first questions was, "Please tell me the project is going to have two elevators." So she was really happy to learn that as well. I'm relocating the chapel, event space, and tuck shop. So if you look on the left-hand picture, on the bottom right there, that's our current chapel space. And we can only, even pre-pandemic, we could probably get 12, maybe 15 residents in the big chairs in that space. And so we're shifting that chapel space to our current dining room space, and you'll see that in the next picture a little more clearly, but it's about four and five times the size. So it's really going to serve the residents well. New family suite, which is something we're really excited to be able to offer, a new health clinic. So when we have dentistry or optometry come in, we'll actually have an area where we can bring residents to, so we're not uprooting other areas or spaces. An updated reception area and enhanced staff and service spaces. So here's a highlight. This is our current dining space, and so in our project, we're going to reuse that space. So about half of our current dining space is going to become our new chapel on the left-hand side. And there's going to be a movable partition, which allows the space to be divided for different uses. So if we want to close it off for chapel, or if we want to open up for larger gatherings. And look how conveniently that tuck shop is co-located adjacent to the event space to serve those large events. This is our main kitchen, and so it's going to be fully renovated with an addition for receiving. And so we're so excited to say renovation is actually going to occur in phases. So the kitchen's going to remain fully functional throughout the project. We're not going to have to bring in a trailer and start cooking outside in the parking lot. We're going to be able to maintain, fully maintain services throughout our project, and this will be our central preparation of meals. And having a look at the basement renovations, we've got some offices there that are going to be relocated from the basement to the first floor. This space will then be converted into staff shower and an enlarged changing room. So every staff member will have a locker. And focusing on infection prevention and control, if the pandemic taught us anything, it was really that we needed to look, go back to our project, make sure we covered everything and implemented what we needed to move forward in a safe manner. So informed by COVID-19 learnings, we talked to public health, we talked to other homes, we talked to the ministry, and we incorporated some best practices. We already had those single rooms with private or shared en suite washrooms, but we incorporated larger dining rooms, allowing for that comfortable space tables. Infection prevention and control supply cupboards are now tastefully incorporated outside each bedroom, so they're built into the wall. You'll see that when we do the 3D tour in a few minutes here. High-quality air exchange system and dedicated oxygen storage space, negative pressure capability at a flip and a switch, and additional staff change room space and individual lockers. So phase one, that's where we are today. Everything you see in yellow is what's going to happen in phase one. That's the addition on the right-hand side, as well as the construction of the new receiving addition. And this, really, we're looking at minimal impact to the existing home for the first 12 months. What's happening right now is where you see the yellow, across from there is all glassed areas on the first floor and the second floor, and the residents are, that's their viewing area. They're already claimed a spot. This is a program. They're watching. They're excited. They're talking amongst themselves, and you can just feel the energy. So that's pretty exciting. And the next slide, phase two, again, we're moving, renovating the north side. So that's the yellow on the top of your screen, and those residents will move into that new addition on far right. And so that work will be done, and so a bit of renovations in some of the core areas on the left-hand side as well. And then phase three, renovation of the first and second floor on the south side. Again, renovating some of the core areas, finishing that up and moving residents out of the south side so that we can do the work in that area. The schedule, I won't go through it in full, but when we get to completion, we're looking at November of 2023. So we're getting there one step at a time. It's exciting days, for sure. And so when we're looking at construction, we are... And so when we're looking at construction, we already have a team that we've developed. It's the same team when we're looking at design planning. So we have disciplines from all three, all of our, all of our departments. We have staff from all of the departments that are part of this team. We're looking at what's happening, what's coming up, how's that going to impact your departments, your workload, your workflow, and how's that impacting staff or residents and visitors? And so we're having those conversations. And of course, safety is the top priority. So we're having monthly meetings, and those could be more frequent or less frequent depending on what's happening within the project. And then recognizing, especially as we move to phase two and three, recognizing and supporting the emotions of change is going to be exciting, but it's also going to be stressful, right? So we need to make sure we're having those conversations so that we can educate, get the feedback, and implement the appropriate new protocols, policies, or procedures. Phase one, which we're in, is going to be the least amount of impact. So it's a nice way to gradually break us in. And phase two and three, as we're moving residents around and staff are getting, and residents are getting used to new layouts, and that will be a change, but we'll enjoy more privacy and less sharing of washrooms during those phases. Again, I can't overstate the importance and value of communication. It's critical for everyone, keeping everyone informed. So you will see me coming back to council to give you updates. And we've already had staff meetings doing this presentation. And we've done it for residents, and the smiles on their faces were huge. And we're going to be posting that online for families as well. And so just listing some of the communication vehicles that are available for us to support that. And very important aspect of this project is our fundraising campaign, appropriately titled Comforts of Home. So got some suggestions there that we're looking at beautifying the courtyards, providing comforts of the home fireplaces, enhancing resident enjoyment and activities, and supporting families. So a lot of great opportunities for those that are interested in supporting the project. And I think the next slide has the link to anyone who's curious, who wants to go on there and have a look and see how they can support the project. And that's just back to the first slide. So now Carolyn's going to pull up the video for us. And it goes very quickly. So I'll try to capture as much as I can as we go through it. So this was developed by M M C to give us. So here we are. We're coming in the front door. So she hasn't hit yet. So that's good. So we're coming in those front double doors. On the right, you see the library area and the front lobby. And on the left-hand side, you're going to see that reception area. And we're going to go down the hall where that window is. That's the beauty salon. And we're going to come down the hall and we're going to turn right going down to the south wing. And so there was an activity area. You're coming up to the two dining rooms. They couldn't find any women to put in here. So it's all men. Sorry, ladies. It's all men that are here at Terrace Lodge today. And so we've got some charting areas. We've got resident rooms. You can notice those cupboards on the outside of bedrooms. That's where we're storing all of our personal protective equipment, keeping it well supplied and readily available for necessary use. And so we're coming down the hall. We've got a nice lounge space and a charting area where staff are readily available should residents require any support. And it's moving down a little bit further. We've got medication and treatment rooms on the left, and we're going to go into a resident room. So this is a single room. And so a lot of space. And you can see the en suite washroom, a lot of storage built into the walls there, coming back out into the hall. And as we go down, we've got tub and shower rooms, we've got storage rooms, we've got some staff space. And we're coming down to a nice, large program room at the end of the hall. And there's a staff office just off of this area. So the recreation department staff are going to be right on site on each of the resident home areas, readily available to support programming. Coming back out into the hall, and we're going to go outside, I believe. We're going into the center courtyard. I just love this piece here. Look at the size of this courtyard and the opportunities for gazebos, raised planters, all the things that we're looking to fundraise for. A lot of usable space for those that are in equipment. And it's a big change for us to have that usable space, accessible area. Absolutely beautiful. So we're going to come back in. And this is going to, this is our current dining room space. And you can see how it's being changed. So it will now, it will become the event space. And on the right-hand side, I think there was a quick little view there of the tuck shop. And this is that movable partition to separate off the chapel from the event space, or we can close it off to be utilized for the chapel. There you have it. We are so excited. And I'm so pleased I had the opportunity today to come and speak to you about this. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Michelle, your enthusiasm and pride is very, very evident. And indeed, it is exciting. Councillor French and Councillor Mennel, myself, along with our capable chairman, Bob Purcell, share that excitement and probably appropriate ask our chairman for some comments. Bob, would you like to see the smile on your face? It's pretty exciting comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. You know, we're all really excited, especially since it's real now. We actually have shovels into the ground and real work happening. And I know from experience down here when we did Bob Beer Villa and a couple of the Lions Apartments buildings, how this becomes the entertainment center for all our current residents as they get to watch the construction and actually feel like they're part of it. I want to commend Michelle and the whole team for putting together the presentation. And they will be updating you regularly as we go along. Financially, I think we have beat the bushes pretty well. And the only reason the steering committee stays in place is in case something starts to go a little bit sideways. But I don't anticipate we'll be doing anything except cheerleading from now on. Thank you, folks.
And I should, you know, like, I did mention the steering committee. But the one thing that we've done is a great team from the architects, the staff people. It's just been a good team effort. We put the right people in there to do the thing. So it's Councillor Jaguerre, if you'd like to come, because certainly the fundraising component of this is that little extra. So please have some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I appreciate the presentation and the update. And you saw in the video that it looks like a beautiful state-of-the-art facility. And we all know that the vision is that we want to take that up to a home. And we want, you know, paint colors that are not like that, like a facility. We need personalized doors. We need planters and bird feeders, and we need recreational equipment. And that will really take it to that vision where it will be a home, not just a facility. And that's what our residents deserve. So but that doesn't come cheap. It will need the support, all of your support, the support of our community. The bill for all of those items is $650,000. And we know that as a community, we can pull this off. So just one step at a time, donate to terrislodge.ca. Super easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, any members of council would like to comment, because this is pretty exciting stuff. Councillor Mennel.
Just a comment. And thanks, Michelle, for the presentation. And I'm sure there's a lot of excited people when they saw the tacos finally coming onto the ground after waiting for four or five years. You mentioned the private rooms are 84. And remind me what it was previous or still is of the existing home?
So right now, we have 20 single rooms.
So significant increase from 20 to 84. That's good news. Thank you.
And Councillor French, I think I saw you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to make a comment about the fact that it's going to be so much more comfortable for the residents, but not just the comfort of our residents. It's going to be so efficient for our staff. It's going to be an amazing change for the staff because the way it's laid out, it's going to loosen up some of their time so that they can be doing other things as well. So I think that the layout and the way that it's going to be set up is just going to be amazing for everyone. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Certainly a confidence builder for staff. You think back to last year, what our long-term care have endured. So something positive to look forward to. Chairman Bob, would you like to move this report?
Yes, sir, I would.
All right. Do we have a second or? Mary French was a little ahead. So moved by Purcell and French, please call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thanks, Michelle. Our next Director of Human Resources, non-union economic adjustment recommendation. Good morning. Welcome, Amy.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. So as is the process annually, HR staff have gathered extensive comparator and market data in order to reach recommended non-union cost of living increase. For planning purposes, 2% was included in the 2021 budget. Therefore, the current recommendation will not negatively impact the approved budget. If approved, the requisite bylaw will be prepared for the next council meeting. And the recommendation before council is for a 1.75% non-union economic increase. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Amy. Councillor Mennel.
Just want to congratulate Amy and her staff for very successful negotiation. I mean, we set a ceiling and she came in, shall we say, under budget. So that's a congratulations.
Further comments?
Councillor Ketchba. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just curious through you to Amy, you mentioned taking a good look at the comparator data. Can you give us an example or perhaps who you were comparing to?
Definitely. So every year, we look at our local municipalities and what their increases are. And then we also have a standard group that we gather from surrounding municipalities, including St. Thomas, Oxford County, Middlesex County, Norfolk County, Wellington, really all the surrounding counties, as well as many local municipalities in our region.
Okay, just to clarify, if I may, your like-sized municipalities, you're not looking at the local municipal partners?
Well, both. We do gather all of that data. And we also are comparing to our settlements with our internal unions to make sure we're not creating any compression issues or anything like that. So we gather all of the data and consider all of that when coming to a recommendation.
Okay. And I'm fishing here. I apologize. But with respect to our comparators, how do staff salary rate with our comparators? Are we at the median mark? Are we above? Are we below? Are we catching up?
Well, that would require a market salary review, which we are due for, and we should plan for next year. That's where a consultant would gather all of our true comparators to determine where our salaries are at. The current process is an annual look at just the cost of living increase. So at this time, we don't gather actual salary data, just their non-union economic increases, the percentage that others are going up by. And that typically keeps us in line with the market as long as we don't come in a lot lower than that on an annual basis.
Okay. Just as an explanation, at BAM, and it's built in our personnel policy that we use the adjustment for CPI for Ontario based on from October. And this past year, it was a 0.7%. That's why I'm looking for the difference. Just for an explanation.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? If there is no further discussion, I'll look for a mover and secuder. Moved by Jones. Second by Mennel. Martin, second by Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Amy. Jim, you're up. Annual repayment limit, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The annual repayment limit is an obligation that is, needs to be published each year, required from the province. And for the county of Elgin, the amount that the county could afford per their rules, which is how much is paid as repayment as well as interest, is a total of $12 million. Currently, there is already debt from public health, which for that, there are charges that are consolidated into our annual statements of $118,000. That leaves the county with $1.8 million in its own, for its own uses. Just to remind the council, in February, you approved the new tenure plan. That had $44 million of borrowing between 2020 and 2025. As an example, that was provided by the province with our annual repayment limit, if we were to borrow a total of $91 million at a rate of 5%, that would be containable within the 11.8 million of available A R, A R L. And if interest rates go up, then obviously the amount that would be, that we could carry within that A R L would come down. Now, those interest rates are higher than we're seeing right now. In fact, the $6 million that we borrowed in November, we achieved a rate of 1.43%. Our second installment on the $6 million, we're planning for May of this year. And although rates are a little bit higher at the moment, we're, they're still below 2%. Even if rates were to climb up to double digits for the future debt that we're going to borrow, we would still be well within our A R L limits. And the report is before you to be received and filed.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Fairly straightforward. Look for a mover and second, please. Mennel, Ketchba. Go ahead and call the vote, please.
Deputy Warren Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor French.
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Director of Engineering Services, Brian, Meeks Bridge replacement.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through to county council, before you is a staff report on the Meeks Bridge replacement tender results and recommendation are before you. Happy to report from a financial standpoint, the budget, the project is well under budget. The project, as previously reported to council, involves relocation of the former Port Bruce temporary bridge and repurposing that structure as well as modifying it to accommodate a two-lane bridge structure. In addition, this project also involves removal of the Port Bruce temporary boat launch and existing temporary bridge approaches and abutment. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Certainly good news, Brian. Councillor Jones, comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Ryan, is there a start date for the removal of the Meeks Bridge? Do you have a timeline for that?
Through Mr. Warden, to Councillor Jones, at this point in time, we don't have a formal schedule, but I, we're expecting some time and a date in April for works to begin.
Sounds great. I'd be happy to move the recommendation.
All right, Councillor Mennel.
And just to follow up on Grant's question, when do we expect to be taking the bridge down in Port Bruce, Brad?
Through Mr. Warden, it's expected the temporary structure is likely to be removed sometime later summer. Again, in the absence of a formal schedule, once received, we'd be happy to. once received, we'd be happy to forward those details on to council.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Further discussion? Certainly good news monetary-wise. Go ahead and call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. County Solicitor, encroachment agreement.
Good morning. There you have.
What is Steve?
A report with respect to seeking approval and authorization executed in an encroachment agreement for exterior stairs, a portion of which encroach on to the Sparta Line road allowance and the and the central Elgin sidewalk associated with the redeveloped and improved Sparta Line. The report is self-explanatory, but I would simply indicate that the encroachment was discovered during the course of the Sparta Line Improvement Project last year. The design accommodated the stairs, but nevertheless, the stairs represent, or at least a portion of them, did represent an unauthorized encroachment. The, rather than require the removals of the stairs, what was proposed was a three-party encroachment agreement involving Elgin, Central Elgin, and the owners. The terms were negotiated, particularly with respect to insurance indemnity. The owners have agreed to the terms and signed the agreement. Central Elgin staff agreed to the provisions and their council will be asked for a similar bylaw for approval at its next meeting. So the recommendations are before you, and I'd be happy to answer any question.
Questions for Steve?
Mr. Warden, Sally.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that I'm really happy that this has finally been concluded. I know it's been ongoing and just so you know, those stairs have been there since 1846, so it's not like they're new and of course, the road was widened years ago and they weren't on the road allowance originally. But I'm really happy that we've come to an agreement. Thank you.
If I, if I could, Warden, the difficulty from a legal perspective is that the encroachment now exists and possessory rights are not allowed against a road allowance.
Okay. Did we get a mover and second or for that? Okay. Mover and second or, please. Purcell.
Sally.
And Martin. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Connectivity Committee requests to engage technical consultant. Julie?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. At the Connectivity Committee meeting held on February 25th, the committee identified a number of steps in their process of developing a made-in-Elgin solution to help solve Elgin's connectivity challenges. This includes the need for a technical assessment and needs assessment of served, underserved, and unserved areas across the county. It also involves an unbiased, objective technical assessment of which technology solutions are most cost-effective and would work best in unserved and underserved areas in the county, and an investigation of possible funding models. The committee determined that as a possible next step, a committee could, or a consultant could be hired to complete these priority items on their behalf. So an RFP has been issued and is has been prepared and sent to the Connectivity Committee for review. That review is of course, subject to County Council's willingness to proceed in this fashion. You'll note that this report also includes a process for handling letters of support, and it is recommended that in order to expedite the letters of support for local ISPs, that the warden be delegated that authority by County Council. So there are three recommendations before you, and there are members of the Connectivity Committee here who I'm sure would be happy to join me in answering any of your questions.
Thank you, Julie. Open the floor for any questions, and Counselor McPhail and Counselor Jagair and myself, and previously Counselor Mennel was on this committee. Been, we've been working harder every other week. Six months now, so we've actually amassed a lot of information that are all there in front of us, and we've come to that conclusion. It's time to make the next step. So it's exciting. You know, the ones at home and your frame freezes and it's, internet is so important, and we've said that so many times in the last year, but that need is greater now than even a year ago, so. But open the floor here for some discussion. Recommendations are there from Julie. Three recommendations. Comments? Counselor McPhail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council, having come to this Connectivity Committee. It has matured to the point now that, I, to be honest with you, I think that demands that this committee is now putting on Julie to come back with information and reports and she's being a self-taught IT, or self-taught broadband consultant, I guess, at this point. But I think that this committee is at the point now where we can no longer put those demands on Julie, and we have to have, we have to have support from someone that has a very good understanding of broadband and what needs to be done in Elgin and to be able to tie that in a format that we can bring forward to County Council for your consideration. And I think it's imperative that we have this professional help on the committee and certainly the recommendations that are in this report are pretty straightforward. But I think just to keep the committee going, there seems to be some enthusiasm around the table, that this is probably the next logical step, and certainly I thank Julie for getting to this, getting us to this point, so.
Thank you for those comments. Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Warden, yeah, I agree. We need to get on this. I think we need that technical help, definitely to move the project further out into the extremities of this county. Just a question, is there any kind of an upset limit on what you expect the consultant will cost, Julie?
No, without a defined RFP, which we hope to have the committee review and review the scope for that consultant, it's hard to estimate as well. Municipalities around us, who we would traditionally reach out to to find out, you know, do you have an RFP template for this? Or what were the costs associated with a study like this? Those examples don't exist, and so it's hard to even set an upset limit at this time. But what we would propose is that we will have the committee review the RFP in detail, post the RFP as soon as possible, and then bring the results back to County Council and propose strategies for funding it. I think right now, my gut tells me it would be a good use of modernization funding and/or COVID funding. So I think to answer your question very simply, we don't have an upset limit at this time.
Counselor Jones, go ahead.
I'll move.
Thank you for that, and Counselor Jagair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just to add to what Counselor McPhail said. So I just want to clarify that this will not duplicate or redo anything that the Connectivity Committee has done and the staff has done. This is really, I see it as our own last mile of the work that we need to do, which just hit the limits of our own knowledge. And we also need a third-party objective view, so this is sort of to really finish the work. And so, yeah, so I think it is a good recommendation. If I come back with the number, I can comment on, in Malahide, we're conducting a feasibility study around towers and with a third party to get an objective view, and I think the RFP came at about close to 50,000. So I wouldn't be surprised if we were looking at that ballpark, could be more, but we'll come back.
You're willing to second this motion? I'd just like to acknowledge the members of the committee, we have volunteers and most helpful. And I did mention that we meet every two weeks, so have to acknowledge staff because they've done a tremendous amount of work. Not just once, but every two weeks, so we appreciate and acknowledge that, so. No further discussion, Counsel Purcell.
Mr. Warden, I.
Counselor Purcell, and then Counselor Martin. Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, Mr. Warden. I think the committee is on the same page as most of the council members. We're much more interested in implementation and execution than somebody studying and telling us what the problem is because that's been beaten to death and cost a lot of money in the past. So I think it's really important as we go out and get this resource that they do things like take it completely off Julie's desk and use it as a standalone implementation tool. I fully agree that we have to simplify things like giving the signing authority for endorsing any projects that are trying to go forward and seek federal and provincial funding at the Warden level. So as long as the emphasis is on implementation and execution, my concern is if we don't do it that way, we will not need them, or we will not need SWIFT because I know in our municipality, rightly or wrongly, we're probably going to be done before we see implementation at those other levels. We're putting up two more towers, and it's not costing our municipality anything. It's just working closely with the service providers who need support to get the access to the federal provincial funding, and then they will go ahead and implement and execute, just like any free enterprise system would do. So I think it's really important that they emphasize that area.
Thank you, Bob. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Yes, just so you're aware, I have to keep turning my video off because it keeps freezing on me. You all freeze, and I certainly support this because I think it is important. And even though I live in a village that has Rogers Cable, I live too far back from the road. So there are lots of examples of people that are missing out, even though there is some service in the area. So I certainly support this.
Absolutely. Until you've had those blackouts, whatever you want to call them, you realize the importance. Someone told me recently, Counselor Martin, there's a new tower gone up on Kateveen. It may be of some help to you.
Yeah, it's not, I can't see it from here, so they said that it wouldn't work because there's no direct line of sight to it. It's not a very tall tower.
Okay. It's going to help some anyway, but we're, we have a mover and second or. No further discussion, we'll call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We look forward to the next step. Elgin County Council Strategic Plan, Staff Action Plan Update, quarterly update. So please go ahead, Julie.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an updated action plan, originally developed by staff in February and March of 2020, most recently updated and presented to council on November the 10th. The actions contained within this plan support Elgin County Council's Strategic Plan 2020 to 2022. There is a recommendation before you, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Questions for Julie. Fairly straightforward, and we are moving along, so mover and second or, please. Ketchba and Mennel.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, please.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an update on the county's COVID-19 response. The recommendation is to receive and file this report. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments for Julie? Everyone's happy with the report by looks of it. Mover and second or, please. McPhail, Jagair. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. On to Correspondence. Right place. Items for consideration, we have a letter from Margaret McCullough regarding the lack of protection for companion animals in Canada. Any comments on that? Deputy Ward, Mennel, go ahead.
I would move support for this. I have no sympathy whatsoever for the puppy mills, and I'm afraid I'm probably a dog lover, but I think this deserves support.
Thank you. Do we have a second or for that?
I just clarify, specifically in what way are we supporting?
Letter, I think we want to send this off to this, I'm sure the feds, this is probably a federal policy, isn't it?
There is an e-petition, so they're asking that we sign and share it. And the request is also that council consider enacting animal welfare legislation similar to that adopted by Beacons Field Council in Quebec.
Okay, sounds good.
We acting animal legislation?
Everyone very clear? This going to kind of take us down further than we want?
I think it's a rabbit hole.
I'm kind of a little leery myself.
Mr. Warden, just as a comment, I received this the other day as a mayor, and if it's the same one that I would think it is, this originated out of Victoria, B.C.
So they've just thrown this body ball and see what sticks?
Yeah, I have not responded to it. Again, I think it's, though the cause may be worthy, it's, I think, beyond the jurisdiction at the municipal level.
So would this be better receive and file?
I would support that.
We have a motion on the floor. I don't see a second or yet.
Counselor French, I think, has, Counselor French has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Actually, I got this email as well, and my CAO gave me some information. If you would like me to share that with council, maybe it would give us a little more insight.
Certainly.
He just said to me that as an aside, this is somewhat interesting, as Ontario has stepped away from an SPCA model two years ago. They were required to by a court ruling. That isn't to say that improvement still can't be made, but Ontario now likely has a more comprehensive response to animal welfare than other provinces. Municipalities can license kennels to prevent puppy mills, but really, the way the system works now, the investigation and prosecution of welfare criminal aspect would fall to the province. This is primarily because their investigators have greater authority and tools now that municipally-appointed by-law officers. So that's just what he shared with me because I was curious about this as well.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Further discussion?
Counselor Martin, wish to speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm aware of the puppy mill thing I ran into. I ran into it looking for a dog. I was warned against, and there are several in Eldon County, just so you're aware that those do exist, and animals are kept in terrible conditions. I think we might endorse at least that the province should be more proactive in dealing with this and getting the licensing in place that Mary mentioned, so that they can't have one without a license and be inspected.
I'm starting to get a little confused here.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
In the absence of a second for the original motion, I'm happy to second Ketchba's secondary motion that is to receive and file.
I will accept that. Further discussion? Are we ready for the vote? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Items for information, they are attached. Do we need to go through each one separately or just collectively?
Unless anyone wishes to make a comment, otherwise you can receive correspondence items one through five. Same motion.
What is your will and pleasure? Is there anyone, any there you'd like to bring out?
Motion to receive and file one through five.
By Deputy Warden Mennel, second by McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin. Kind of Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Other business, we have statements, inquiries by members. Noting none. Notice of motion. Noting none. Matters of urgency, I hope not, but noting none. We're at close, ready to go into close, those meetings, closed session. Before we do, should we have a short recess?
If we could just do the motion now, then we're in close.
Okay, the motion to move into closed session, please. Jones and French. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel. Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French. Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right, before we go into, we'll take a short recess. We are back live, entertaining motion to move into closed, open session.
Move to rise and.
Ketchba, rise and report, Ketchba and Mennel. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
If I'm on the right spot, we're first report on investigation update.
Be resolved that the report from the tree commissioner be received.
Mover and seconders, please. Ketchba and Jones. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel. Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Impacts of administration building elevator and basement accessibility washroom project. Mover and seconders for that. Mennel and French. Any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
I just need to back up.
Okay.
I think we should explicitly say that be resolved that the report from the Director of Engineering Services be received. Moved by Mennel, seconded by French, and then Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. On to tenant acknowledgement and agreement. Eldon County Administration Building Elevator Improvement Project.
Be resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconders, Shiger, Jones.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Property matter.
Be resolved that the report from the county solicitor be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Mennel, second by Ketchba, thank you. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel. Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item five, service delivery review, road maintenance agreement study.
Be resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by McPhail, second by Purcell. Oh, Martin, thank you. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Land's update, please.
Be resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Moved by Jones, Mennel. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology Loan Agreement, please.
Be resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by Purcell, second by McPhail. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Counsel Shiger.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Finally, the organizational review.
Be resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
By Ketchba, Mennel. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.
Yes.
Counsel Martin.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel French.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole. Need a mover, Shiger.
Jones.
Jones. Thank you, call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counsel McPhail.
Yes.
Counsel Purcell.